Calling this meeting of the South River Mayor and Borough Council of November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one to order. May I have the statement of notice of publication?
In compliance with chapter two fifty, two thirty-one of Public Law of nineteen seventy-five, notice of this meeting to be held at the Criminal Justice Building, sixty-one Main Street, South River, has been published in the Home News Tribune on November tenth, two thousand and twenty-one, posted on the Municipal Building Bulletin Board, the Borough website, the front door of the Criminal Justice Building at sixty-one Main Street, South River.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Krenzel?
Here.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Here.
Councilman Gindy?
Here.
Councilman Gerchinsky?
Here.
Councilwoman Mira?
Here.
Councilman Olivera?
Here.
And Council President Seola?
Here. Thank you. Please stand for a seat to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. No more silence. Thank you. There are no proclamations, honors, words, or presentations. We will do the executive session and we will go now because we do have a professional here. So we will read the resolution and break for the executive session. Madam Clerk?
Resolution two thousand and twenty-one to ninety, authorizing entrance into executive session for discussion of personnel and litigation matters. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gindy, seconded by Mrs. Ballas.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilman Gerchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
And Council President Seola?
Yes.
Shall we turn? May I have a motion to reconvene? Motion. Motion by Mr. Gindy, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. All in favor? Aye. Against, the ayes have it. And of course, our... All right. Moving on with the agenda. The agenda session has a number of items for discussion because I want to make sure that the governing body understands what is being on for discussion and for possible vote. There are two more meetings to go after this. If the governing body comes to a conclusion that it is ready to introduce them, they are already under ordinance's first reading by title only, and they, of course, can be removed if there's more discussions to be done with them. The first one is two thousand and twenty-one dash twenty-two, which concerns the tree fund, which has been revised, beaten up, and smashed around by everybody. Are there comments on this? Do you all understand what is being proposed?
Looked into the revision of this one.
What do you mean that's too...
Like, who did this revised ordinance?
That sliding scale?
Uh huh.
It was based on number of trees, based on the going rate on these trees, prices of these trees, and that's where we came up with the conclusion.
Who's "we"? I'm just asking.
Planning board.
Okay, so this was the recommendation that came from the planning board.
Yep.
This one looks like a very well-done homework. Somebody did their homework on this one because the first ordinance shouldn't have been brought up.
That's why it's always the first reading, so you can make changes.
A first reading should be up and ready to go. You're wasting people's money by bringing up ordinances and then taking them down and then putting them back on. I just want to thank whoever did this one because at least like this, because of the change of the price of removing of trees, it would affect a lot of people who would have small jobs that wouldn't, just wouldn't want to replace the tree. So this one is very well-done. Thank you.
If it is a pleasure, then you can introduce it as the ordinance first reading by title only at the appropriate place in the agenda. So we will move it then. Two thousand and twenty-one dash twenty-three, the athletic lighting fees. This is an ordinance concerning the cost for...
Fields.
Any discussions on this?
I'm happy we're finally addressing this. The Rec Advisory Board brought this up in two thousand and seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and I'm happy that this is finally being addressed. Right now, our DPW is being hampered with costs, and I'm just thrilled to see this on air.
If you wish, then it can be also moved at the appropriate place in the agenda. Two thousand and twenty-one dash twenty-four, Deputy Chief of Police. This concerns, I believe, the removal of that position.
First part of the ordinance.
Questions on this?
Is there a specific reason why we're removing it, or...
This has been a position that's been sitting in the ordinance since two thousand and twelve. Hasn't been entertained. So the more and more I looked into the history of it, dating back as nineteen ninety-nine, the deputy chief's position has never been in play until two thousand and six. Ironically, it pulled up in the middle of the ordinance. That same year, somebody became a deputy chief. He stayed in that position for three years, and that position was never filled again. So my proposal to this was to get rid of the deputy chief's position and add a lieutenant, making it four lieutenants on the books, which would be the next meeting for the ordinance for lieutenant. Moving the ranks, helping the rest of the guys.
Questions? Okay. If it is your pleasure, then it can be placed on the agenda, appropriate place. And two thousand and twenty-one dash twenty-five, concerning snow emergency. This was proposed by the business administrator.
Yes, Mayor, after last year's snowstorm, there were many comments from the public about the DPW not being able to do a good job on some of the smaller streets because people were parking on other sides. So looking into what other townships did in the same situation, they made the entire town a snow emergency street. You can't park on anything once it's deemed a snow emergency, and this would allow the DPW to go curb-to-curb.
How would the people be notified that this is a snow emergency?
We would put in special signs on a whole bunch of locations. I think it's seven or eight in the entrances to the towns notifying that in case of a snow emergency, all streets are considered snow emergency streets.
Yes, but how would the people be notified that a snow emergency...
Open on our website. We could send out a nixle when it gets passed. We could, next year, if you want, we could put the ordinance or a statement on the ordinance into utility bills.
Mayor, I have a question. A lot of our lots in town are undersized, and a lot of them don't even have a driveway. How do we propose doing that to our residents who don't have a driveway?
That is a question.
Mayor, they could speak to their neighbors. If they could use their driveway, they could find an alternate place to park. We find that many of the people that parked on the streets had driveways and did not want to park on their driveways. Be easier to remove the snow, they said.
Mr. Lindt, could we use Blue Acre property?
Hmm?
Blue Acre proper...
Blue Acre?
Yeah, like you...
Absolutely not.
So we can't have cars park on...
Absolutely not. I just got a letter and pictures from the inspectors from Blue Acres about lots that people are parking on, ordering us to have the people's cars removed. And speaking with the DPW director, we're going to be putting some temporary fencing across the front of those lots, so people can't use it for parking lots. DEP doesn't allow that.
I, yeah, I, I, I live on a snow street. I have a driveway, which I use, but people up the street are not as, and they have driveways and didn't park on their driveways. This is a hard one.
Yeah, because there are a lot of streets in town that the houses are up front, they don't even have a driveway. How are we going to tell residents who pay taxes that...
But then they're the same ones that are calling up saying they're, they're not getting their street plowed. Not them, but their neighbors are. This is a hard one to... I get it, some people don't have driveways.
I wouldn't even say a few. I think a lot of lots in town, the older parts of our town, they don't have driveways or front yards. Where do you expect them to park their vehicles?
This should reduce the amount of the snow emergency. If DPW can get in curb-to-curb and get the snow out of the way, out of the streets, it would probably reduce the snow emergency because then the streets will be passable.
But where do they go in the meantime with their cars?
Question, do other towns have this?
Yes, South Brunswick, East Brunswick.
Okay, but East Brunswick, I'm sure doesn't have small lots like we do in South River. You can't compare South River to East Brunswick.
Does Cerrville have this?
I'd have to check, Mayor.
That's all they can park in municipal lot. Because then they got to clean the municipal lot first.
Who wants to park it further and whether they can walk home? I don't like this one.
That's why it's on the agenda session to discuss. If you wish to introduce it at our next, at the appropriate placing in the agenda, somebody may, or you don't have to. So that's why we discuss those things under the agenda session. Moving on, ordinances, second reading, public hearing, two thousand and twenty-one dash eighteen. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance amending, an ordinance fixing the salary ranges of certain borough officers and employees in the borough of South River.
Make the motion wait for reading.
Motion has been made by Council President Seola to waive the full reading, seconded by Mr. Gindy. All in favor? Aye. Against, the ayes have it. Opening this up to the public to discuss the matters of adding a part-time bus driver and cheerleading instructor. You may come forward, please give your name and address. You can ask any questions, make any comments concerning same on first call, second call, third call. Motion to close.
Second.
Motion to close by Mr. Gindy, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. All in favor? Aye. Against, the ayes have it. Your pleasure on the ordinance?
Make a motion to remove the ordinance?
Ordinance has been moved by Mr. Seola.
Second.
Seconded by, we'll let Mr. Olivera do it. Mr. Olivera has seconded. Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilman Gerchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Seola?
Yes.
The ordinance has been adopted. Two thousand and twenty-one dash nineteen, Madam Clerk?
An ordinance to amend the Borough of South River, Chapter one fifty-five dash nineteen point one, Section twenty-two dash sixty-two, to add cheerleading class fees.
Make a motion to waive the full reading.
Second motion has been made to waive the full reading by Mr. Seola, seconded by Mr. Gindy. All in favor? Aye. Against, the ayes have it. Opening this up to the public to discuss the matter of adding cheerleading class fees to the ordinances. You may come forward, please give your name and address, and ask any questions or make any comments on first call, second call, third call. Motion to close. Second motion by Mr. Gindy, seconded by Mr. Seola. All in favor? Aye. Against, the ayes have it. Your pleasure on the ordinance?
Move the ordinance. Question. The organization came before me. They were looking to amend some of the costs of the cheerleading classes. They were looking to change this.
Okay.
Mr. Gindy, can I...
Sure, go ahead, Madam.
I would, in my suggestion, I would pass this one today because later on is when they're going to need the other fees to be added. I would pass this one so that you don't stall this one.
Yeah.
And do a first reading.
Happy that you said that because I reached out to her and I told her exactly what you were recommending, and they were still for this being changed to first reading today and having it passed for second reading on December ninth. Six. Or sixth. I was actually shocked that they wanted to do that.
What do they want to change it to?
They want to change...
They want to add a fee.
They want to add, add a couple of...
They're not changing the existing ones. They want to add an additional fee.
I saw that somewhere. That's why I was just going to ask that question. You were asking something about...
They were sent to me.
Yeah.
They were sent to me.
If I may, Mayor, just for clarification purposes, the email was that they wanted to add two fees, but one section, it's for competition. So for the participants to compete in various competitions, it would be an additional seventy-five dollars if they are taking classes. If they are not taking classes, for them to compete, it would be a hundred dollars. So that was what their request was about the competition, but the rest of the class fees would remain the same.
Is that, Mr. Gindy, or is that your understanding?
Yes.
Yes.
Would that be a small amendment, or would we have to go back to first reading for that?
If, if you accept the amendment tonight, it would be first reading, tonight would be converted to first reading. We republish and public hearing would be on December sixth, and a public hearing and adoption on December sixth.
Okay.
My question to you was, is that your understanding?
Right.
About to, okay.
I just knew that they didn't want to change what they had. They just wanted to add two more fees.
Then as I would understand it, there'd be a motion to amend this ordinance.
To add the competition.
To add those two fees and to have it republished in accordance.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Gindy has made a motion to make the changes that we've been discussing. It's been seconded by Mr. Olivera, and this will be converted into a first reading to be published in accordance with state statute and have a second hearing on it on December the sixth meeting, seven o'clock or soon thereafter, as may be heard. That is, the motion has been seconded by Mr. Olivera. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilman Gerchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
And Council President Seola?
Yes.
Revisit this on December the sixth. Moving on to two thousand and twenty-one dash twenty. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance amending article, I'm sorry, I was getting thrown off with this, seventeen Municipal Alliance Committee for Prevention of Alcoholism and Drug Abuse.
Right, this is to change the meeting schedule revision for the Municipal Alliance. May I have a motion to waive the...
Make a motion to waive the full reading.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Seola to waive the full reading, seconded by Mr. Gindy. All in favor? Aye. Against, the ayes have it. Moving this on to the public, open this up for public discussion. If you have any questions or comments, you may do so. Please come forward, give your name and address on this ordinance on first call, second call, third call. Motion to close. Motion closed by Mr. Gindy, seconded by Mr. Seola. All in favor? Aye. Against, the ayes have it. Your pleasure on the ordinance?
The ordinance.
Ordinance has been moved by Mrs. Ballas.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Gerchinsky. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilman Gerchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
And Council President Seola?
Yes.
Motion has been adopted. Moving on to two thousand and twenty-one dash twenty-one. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River as, so as to amend Chapter one ninety-three entitled Vehicles and Traffic. These are the...
Motion to waive the full reading.
Second. Motion has been made by Mr. Seola to waive the full reading, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. All in favor? Aye. Against, the ayes have it. It's concerning stop signs at Leonardine Avenue and Shine Fine Avenue and stop signs at Cam Avenue and Foothills Drive. I'm opening this open to the public. If you may come forward, please give your name and address, and you can ask any questions or make any comments concerning same on first call, second call, third call. Motion to close. Second. Motion has been made by Mr. Gindy, seconded by Mrs. Ballas to close the public portion. All in favor? Aye. Against, the ayes have it. May I have a motion on this ordinance?
Make a motion to move the ordinance.
Second. Ordinance has been moved by Mr. Seola, seconded by Mr. Gerchinsky. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilman Gerchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
And Council President Seola?
Yes.
Motion has been adopted. There is new ordinances. Beware of stop signs growing at Leonardine Avenue and Shine Fine Avenue and Cam Avenue and Foothills Drive. Learn to do, go back to your basic driving skills and remember what to do when you come to a four-way or three-way stop. We come to part of our agenda, the ordinances, first reading by title only. We're going to read them. Is there support for two thousand and twenty-one dash twenty-two? Well, why don't we, why don't we introduce them so, because I believe that there are rules for the first three. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend Chapter three fifty entitled Zoning. This is for the tree fund revision.
Motion to accept.
Mayor, I'll move that the council pass ordinance two thousand and twenty-one dash twenty-two on its first reading by title only, that the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading, and public hearing to be held at seven P. M. on December the sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building at sixty-one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second. Motion has been made by Mr. Seola, seconded by Mr. Gindy. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilman Gerchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Council President Seola?
Yes.
Ordinance two thousand and twenty-one dash twenty-three, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend Chapter one fifty-five entitled Fees. This is for athletic lighting fees. May I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Mayor, I'll move that the council pass ordinance two thousand and twenty-one dash twenty-three on its first reading by title only, and the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held at seven P. M. on December the sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building at sixty-one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Seola, seconded by Mr. Gindy. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilman Gerchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
And Council President Seola?
Yes.
Ordinance two thousand and twenty-one dash twenty-four, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend Chapter seventy-two entitled Public Safety Department of, this is for the Deputy Chief of Police title removal. May I have a motion?
Mayor, I'll move that the council pass ordinance two thousand and twenty-one dash twenty-four on its first reading by title only, and that the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held on seven P. M. on December the sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building at sixty-one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second. Motion has been made by Mr. Seola, seconded by Mr. Gindy. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindy?
Yes.
Councilman Gerchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
And Council President Seola?
Yes.
Ordinance two thousand and twenty-one dash twenty-five, an ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending Chapter one ninety-three of the Borough Code of the Borough of South River entitled Vehicles and Traffic. That's for the snow emergency signage.
Is there any movement on this?
If we set it up for first reading, as we always do, we can always amend anything before, on the second reading and bring it back to a first reading.
The snow, the snow. I don't like this.
You don't necessarily have to...
I know, we have to do it. Okay.
But, why don't you introduce it and see if there is a second? If there's a second sign, we can, you know, discuss it or just let it die.
Okay, move that the council pass ordinance two thousand and twenty-one dash twenty-five on its first reading by title only, and the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held immediately at seven P. M. on December the sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, by video conference via Zoom or in the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building at sixty-one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Motion has been made by Councilman Seola. Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? The ordinance will not be moved forward. There has been no second. And it can always be, you know, reviewed either this year or next year. You could also, may I suggest, have non-snow emergency streets, make the entire town emergency streets except for certain towns. Just, you know, reverse the process. Different ideas, it's been brought forth. It's something to discuss. Remember, there is no right or wrong answers on these things. It's just trying to make things better for the people. Reports. Finally, sir, good to you, Mr. Koch.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Good to see everybody. Two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one local aid projects with the Currin and Cywood program, we received the contracts executed from the contractor, process them with the borough. Once we get to sign contracts, we can schedule a pre-construction meeting for that. The two thousand and twenty-two local aid project, the borough received a four hundred fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and ten dollar grant from the DOT for Appleby Avenue, Morningside, and Fifth Street. We're preparing a proposal to the borough for our services on that. Electrical substation maintenance, the contractor's returning this week to do testing of the feeder lines. Well-to-replacement, the mechanical work associated with the well has been completed. The new building has been installed. A significant amount of electrical work is remaining, which is currently under construction, and then the site restoration needs to be completed. That doesn't mean the well will go into service. There's the permitting process, which we are working on also. Last item, which I will remove after tonight's meeting, is the New Jersey Local Freight Impact. Reason I'll remove it is if we don't have anything that comes up tonight, the deadline will pass prior to your next meeting. So, and that is it.
Anything for Bruce.
Bruce, I'm sorry, we don't have a said date. We don't think we're going to start those road projects at all this year, or they haven't told you?
I did talk to the contractor about the possibility of doing a couple of the roads I did talk to the contractor about the possibility of doing a couple of the roads that, the water main pipe, I'll back up. At the pre-construction meeting, they told us the water main pipe is 16 weeks out, so that precludes Alborn. Rather than not do anything, I did ask the contractor to look into the possibility doing a couple of the roads which were easier and the ones in worse state of repair. And they are looking into that to see about scheduling that. But at the same time, I have some concern with the cold weather, that's we're having some asphalt plants, I'm told, are starting to shut down for the season. So, I think we'll just have the pre-construction meeting and see what they say and then monitor the weather and just take it from there.
Okay.
All right, I don't wanna, I don't wanna start something that can't be finished, that would be bad, especially for plowing. But if the weather trend gets a little better, maybe we can get in there and get one or two of them done that are in really rough shape, which would be in the best interest, so.
Okay.
Kind of torn on it right now, see what the weather tells us and what's going on with the materials.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Koch, have a good night, Mr. Zanga.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item is 2020 order that I completed and it's up for approval. Everybody else has, I've never signed yet, they have sort of gave it up for all five of you. Uh, there were no recommendations, it's a good thing I'm a private civil department, that's very well done. Second item is there's a specializing revenue to incorporate a grant to the 21 budget for someone please to borrow for bulletproof vests. Third item is you have two resolutions for park improvements, uh, one to Fitzpatrick Park and one to Shinefly Park and Leonardine Park. Both were purchased under the Education Service Commission co-op and the Burton County co-op, both are gonna have the same rubber material like down at Varga Park, if anyone's seen Varga Park last year, it was done, it's gonna have the same surface. Uh, we're gonna be using $41,841 from HCD funds from last year, not the one this year, last year. And then the remain, the remaining money will be coming out of the 2021 budget for park improvements. We also have a resolution canceling prior grants and grant receivables, we do this every year. And two more, a resolution authorizing a borough auction, this is all the S X, excess vehicles that are down at the, uh, borough lot. Uh, so we need to pass that today and then it can be advertised and the sale is gonna be on November 26th. And then last thing is, mayor, if the council wants to do no parking, like we've done every year for holiday season. The clerk does have a resolution from Thanksgiving to Christmas that we normally do, we put the bags on the meters. It's up to the council if you wanna do it, the clerk does have a resolution, if you don't wanna do it, then we just don't bag the meters. Okay, but if, alright, that's what you can answer the agenda at the end.
Happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving, Mr. Mayor.
Thanksgiving.
That's it.
Okay. Uh, speaking as to what is done, you know, traditionally, we have done that, uh, goes from, uh, Thanksgiving, you know, have to pay the meters. Of course, the resulting problems are, of course, some people will park in front of the, uh, meter and just leave the car there for six, seven, eight hours. But on the other hand, it's something to help the businesses in the town, uh, rather popular. It is up to you, is there a feeling that we should put that on for the resolution, add it on?
Yes.
Yes.
You okay? Please do, madam, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Zanga, is there anything else for Mr. Zanga?
I have a question, Mr. Zanga, once we, uh, approve the purchase of this, do they have a timeframe of the install of the playgrounds?
They're probably out a few months, so it's probably gonna be in the spring.
Okay.
It's supply issues and so forth, so, and then the weather's gonna come and they don't wanna force someone to mix in cold weather either, so, right now, we're probably looking at spring. Which I think is better, because we do it now and something gets ruined during the weather in the, in the, in the wintertime, it would be somewhat of a waste of money, so I would probably wait till the weather breaks and then have them do it.
The only reason for asking was because that last meeting when I mentioned, not knowing about this purchase, it's on today's agenda as well, but we spent the better half of the end of summer and fall with Fitzpatrick in need of a little bit of a repair that could have been done for the remaining of this year, but next year we'll have a better park, I guess.
Anything else for Mr. Zanga? Nothing, thank you. DeSorres, anything to report for DPW?
Yes, Mayor, uh, next Thursday and Friday will be closed for Thanksgiving, so there's a new schedule for garbage and recycling, so. If your garbage gets picked up on Thursday, it'll be picked up on Wednesday, so put it out Tuesday night. There's no change on the Wednesday garbage, same day, and recycling that usually gets picked up on Thursday will now be picked up on Saturday. And there'll be no bulk for Friday, and also the recycling center will be open and the information will be on Facebook, the website in the next, we set up. That's all.
Anything for Mr. Zorg.
Age, on Whitehead Avenue.
Yes.
You know, it's a county road, right in front of, I believe, Magaro Road. There's a pretty bad dip right there, watched several people bottom out.
It was pretty bad, wasn't it?
Yeah.
It's not worse. It's county, yeah, where we're in. We're good on it.
Anyone else? Thank you. Madam Clerk?
No report.
Well, are we finally done with the election?
To my knowledge, it's still unofficial.
Yes, provisional. Your job is finished, but now it's the county is counting still provisional votes?
I think, yeah, provisional, because they do the mail-ins first and then provisionals, whatever provisionals are left, I haven't gotten the official results yet.
And when are the official results supposed to be?
I wanna say the deadline, it's in December, it has to be, off the top of my head, I don't know, but there's, there is a deadline in December that the elections have to be certified. I wanna say the 14th, but I think that's too late, I think it's sooner in December.
When are, do they have to be done counting the provisionals?
By that date in December, they have to have it all certified by the date in December, so I'm sure they're gonna have it done before that.
So we'll have an unofficial, yeah.
Well, we should get an official soon, after they certify it in early December.
Thank you. Is there anything as far as legal is concerned?
I have nothing tonight, ma'am.
Business administrator?
Mayor, the only thing I have, the number 300, is I reviewed and made changes to the Middlesex County Preparedness Mitigation Plan for OEM. And it is acceptable, and ask you to approve that tonight, that's the only thing I have.
Any questions there? No, then let us have our reports up here, Mr. Gindi.
Uh, planning board meeting which is held, uh, tomorrow has been canceled due to the League of Municipalities, next meeting will be in December, uh, November 23rd is gonna be the zoning board meeting. And for Parks and Rec, uh, Christmas content, uh, Christmas, Christmas light contest starts, uh, right after Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mrs. Ballas?
I have nothing at this time.
Mr. Seola?
Uh, nothing at this time.
Okay, Mr. Olivera?
My committee is a moment there.
Okay, Mr. Gerchinsky?
Nothing at this time.
Mara?
Uh, I'd just like to say the Board of Health, uh, doesn't have any more meetings for the rest of the year, but just for our residents to look out that we are looking to do the free rabies clinic in January like it usually is. Um, this year, we had the rabies clinic mid-June and we waived the late fees for anyone who was waiting on our clinic. But, uh, it looks like we'll be going ahead in January, so, beginning of the year, we should have a date for that, so just to look out.
Thank you. Um, my report consists of basically, uh, two things that have already been discussed, I just wanted to bring this out because a number of people asked me. The 2020 roadway program consists of regi- repaving First Street from New Street to Leonardine Avenue, Clermont, James Street to David Street, Oberst Street, Main Street to Jackson Avenue, Gordon Street, Main Street to Washington Street, Clayton Court, Wilcox Street Drainage Repairs from Darrell Street to Edgewood Street. The 2021 roadway's program is Alborn Street, Cleveland Avenue to Wilbert Street. Clayton Court should be a deletion item because it's already been taken care of in 2020 and Ferris Street, Cleveland Avenue to Darrell Street. Uh, the borough received the $457,410 grand for Appleby Avenue, Morningside Avenue and Fifth Street. The proposal will be, uh, for CME's work on that, it's going to be coming, all of that, as you heard, will probably be done next year. The other thing is the audit report, uh, every year, the town is audited and the auditor had nothing to recommend, that is a feather in our cap because we are doing things the right way, at least in the eyes of the state, and therefore, uh, they have nothing to recommend as far as making any changes and we will continue to do the good work that we are doing now. Finishing our report, we now open it up to the public, you will have 10 minutes to speak, please come forward, give your name and address.
Kevin Nielsen, one Monticello Way, South River, uh, 2124. Why would you change this, would you do?
Why, this is a position that's been sitting there, lingering, not being used. So my thought on it was to get rid of it and actually add another position to the ranks.
That makes no sense. You're gonna get rid of a position and add a position?
Yes.
Position's already there. Who needs to be taken care of for that new position?
They would have to take it, there would be a test.
That's how this works, if you, I, I don't know why the chief in his tenure has not taken one of the three lieutenants and put him in that position. I mean, if I'm a lieutenant and I've been here as long as he's been in tenure and he hasn't put any one of us into that position, that's an insult. And that's how you should thank him, Mike, you, the other lieutenant should take that as insult because he doesn't think you're good enough to be in that position anymore. And that's an insult to you, and I've worked on them all three of them and they're all very good men. Um, this goes back to when we made the news for the fake college degrees, I don't know if you remember that, I don't know if you were around for that. But, um, that's when the deputy chief position came, somebody needed to be taken care of and didn't have what he needed to get to that position. So we went to the people who are on the council and they had a position specifically that the chief would make the determination who gets it. And that position was filled twice and has been filled since, so why don't you say to the chief, what's wrong with the three lieutenants that you have that you can't fill this position to?
Alright, you said it was filled twice.
Yeah, John Musalet and Martinigan.
Martinigan was never acting, was, sorry, was never deputy chief.
He was acting.
He was acting, uh, deputy chief, sorry, he was acting chief.
God, my.
That is right.
Yeah.
From May.
Musalet snuck out to go.
Right, from December, that is correct, you, you hit it right on note.
I'm believing you, I was working at.
From May to literally, sorry, from December to May when. Right. You're absolutely right.
Okay, so, alright, so there was one.
You're absolutely right, and I'll be the first to tell you.
He did that because he didn't, he didn't have the guts to stand up to Greg Bolzard.
That's correct.
That was done.
That is correct.
That's exactly why.
Right.
Musalet did that, he didn't have the guts to stand up to Greg Bolzard and says, hey, I'm not picking you, I'm picking my friend.
Actually, also, there was one more lieutenant at the time, John Casey.
Yeah, well, yeah, John Casey.
Yeah.
So.
There.
Yeah, I'm believing you, I was there, I was there. Um, so, I, it just.
I agree with, I agree with that statement, but those three lieutenants are remarkable police officers, matter of fact, everyone.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Remarkable police officers.
Nothing issue, but I, I don't want to be interested.
The problem I have.
I'm always waving it, um, they're a great bunch of guys.
Right.
And it's an insult to them to say that you're gonna take away this position and, I'm sorry, but I see it as we have somebody we need to take care of. He's not in a position for me to take care of, so I gotta get this out of here, put this in place and then I can take care of my friend so that when I leave in a couple of years, my friend can take my position right now. That's just the way I see things, all right, because that's the way it works, 30 years in here and that's the way it works. It worked that way from when I went in, George Serkwas came in when I was here, the Frank guy, the Baba, the Musalet, it's an, that's the way it works. It's an insult to these officers, the men and women that wear badges, they come here every day and, uh, and that's just my opinion. I, I really wish you would reconsider, do away with it, ask him, why aren't any of these individuals good enough for deputy chief? There's gotta be a reason, and if not, what's he doing about it? They're not good enough to fill the position and he's not training them to, to become qualified enough to fill that position, so is he derelict in history? I don't know, I don't know. Maybe we're right with the snow streets, you got like Charles Street, Lawless Street, what are you gonna park?
Washington.
The winters all saw that and it didn't go ahead with that one, that was a smooth one. You really should set something up with the DPW so that when it does snow, you get to those narrow streets first so that you can open them up and they can get out. And then move up to all up the wider streets, and yeah, I live on Clark Street, right? The guys next door to me, big enough to ride with for five cars, wouldn't park one out in the road. Wouldn't park any, and they all parked in the road.
Five in the street.
Yeah, every one of them, so, but that's an insult to these men and women who wear the badge in this town that you're gonna do this ordinance. I hope you reconsider at the next reading and you get some answers on why none of the lieutenants that he has in that position aren't qualified to take it and why didn't you do anything to bring them up this month? That's it?
Thank you, sir, first reading, if you can, anything else?
Good evening, uh, Paul Zensky, 1241, based on the project, I'm currently a police officer in South River, Mr. Allen, and I am the, uh, current, um, PBA president of a public union. Um, this is regarding, uh, 2021-24, the deputy chief position, our RPBA, um, made a statement, um, regarding, okay? Good evening, our union is here today because of a general concern, a concern that our police department is not being run efficiently. Union leadership, past and present, have been questioning the vacancy of the deputy chief position, we see that the position is needed, however, our chief believes we are too top-heavy and there is not enough workload for it. We do not agree with that, we were first told the decision to have a deputy chief was up to you, mayor and council. But when I explained our union would speak to you, it then changed to restructure. We were told of the possibility of having four lieutenants, or three lieutenants and a captain, and then the idea of corporals was given to us to research. I spoke to, um, past leadership and was told the corporal position was, uh, brought up and shot down immediately. So you can imagine the confusion we all had when trying to process all these possibilities. A couple of reasons that stand out on why we believe a deputy chief is needed is the now four lawsuits facing our department. And I believe the chief is listed maybe in four of them, I'm, I'm not sure. But it was brought to the attention in the beginning of this year that it was oh, that it was always obvious that the deputy chief position was dangled in front of three lieutenants. We knew which lieutenant was in the doghouse based on how they were treated, lack of communication was one sign, and then a lieutenant's office was set up in a patrol sergeant's office located in the basement right next to our break room. Both was the saving grace for the patrol lieutenant and sergeant to move out of that room. Most of you have all seen the police department's basement and we, I think it's safe to say that it's disgusting but embarrassing. We have been asking for improvements for our building for years, but it seems like the process is slow. There were two officers who did not have any uniforms or badges with, uh, working full-time in this town, we can't really grasp why there isn't badges ready for the next future hires. Um, a badge is necessary to identify yourself immediately as a police officer. There were officers who were also given used equipment from officers who have retired from the South River this month. We have set up committees under the chief's direction and almost all of them have been completed, but now they are waiting for the chief's approval, they have been done for months. Now, these are just some examples of why we need a deputy chief, but most importantly, we need someone to be trained to lead our police department for the future. Someone who the department and the town trusts. Our union filed agreements for this position on Wednesday, November 10, 2021, only to find out that this position was on tonight's agenda, to be removed. Unfortunately, we were not informed that this was happening and luckily, we did our, our research to find this out. Majority of our police departments are comprised of young officers, including myself and officers behind me as well, we need to know who our next leader is. We want our department to be run smooth and efficiently. We are respectfully asking you, mayor and council, to, to not vote tonight on this matter or to not vote or to vote no. Uh, we want you all to meet with us and discuss all concerns on why we need a deputy chief. Again, these were just some examples on why we believe this department is being run inefficiently. If you refuse to not meet with us and proceed to move forward, we will then be forced to speak about all concerns exam, and, and, I'm sorry, all concerns and examples for the next council meeting. Thank you for your time, mayor and council, and we look forward to speaking with you all.
Good evening, uh, Bernie Mathew, I'm the president of the Superior Officers Association, uh, with the PBA. So just have some general questions, uh, sorry that Nielsen actually hit on a couple of them, um, and I guess actually, Councilman Gindi, you did at the beginning. Uh, like I said, big communication issue, we were not sure, uh, how this came about, we saw this on the agenda item. I know you said you were looking in, uh, to the ordinance, like what brought this about? What made you look into and say, let me look at the deputy chief position and it's history?
Right to your question, this has been going on for about a good two years, okay, literally. The only reason it came about now is because I kept on going through all these ordinances where I'm gonna start cleaning up a bunch of ordinances. Matter of fact, I started at the last council meeting. This is by coincidence and he said something that there was a grievance issued two days ago, didn't know about it, I like the copy of it.
I have a copy of it, so the chief didn't advise you guys that there was a grievance?
I have a liberty of it.
Just by chance on Wednesday?
No, so I would like to, I like to see your grievance.
Oh, okay, I could read it.
No, you can have it.
I'm told it's had a statement, I could read it.
Can I get a copy of it?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, would you like me to?
You can email it. You can email it.
You know?
You can email it.
Uh. So obviously, you guys didn't know that we filed a grievance, um, obviously, it seems like a big coincidence that we filed a grievance, um, there's no communication and then it's just on the agenda. Uh, was there communication between you and the chief that this was gonna be on the agenda for today?
Fortunately, not, as a matter of fact, the position of putting up four lieutenants was pretty ballsy on my side, but the way I looked at it was it actually jumped from two lieutenants back in 2006 to three, and I kept on asking why. But yet, the captain's position disappeared and he just mentioned something about a corporal which I did not know about either.
So obviously, there's a lot of confusion, a lot of things, ballsy moves by you, not referring to our chief of police.
No, unfortunately not.
His department, so I mean, I think, can we all come with some sort of agreeance that maybe, I don't know, I, I know the Public Safety Committees are appropriate authority.
Your public safety, your media, your public safety is your immediate.
Okay.
All right, but since everything that's been going on, we have not been allowed to do anything with the chief. Unfortunately, and with all this lawsuits going on, fortunately, no communication is allowed.
Okay, so we can't even, if we don't discuss the different, oh, with the.
With the chief.
So how's the town supposed to run efficiently?
Everything is public safety.
Public safety.
Yeah, the three people.
Do you wanna meet with the Public Safety Committee?
That's who you want.
That's from the council? We have a Public Safety Committee.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, before, I, I mean, I, I would think before any drastic moves happen with the police department, I think it'd be, I mean, um, it's really unfortunate that the chief can't be a part of it, but I think at, at the very least, maybe we could talk with the, with the unions. Like I said, I think our PBA president brought up a decent amount of concerns, like I said, we don't wanna air out everything in the. Like I said, we don't wanna air out everything in the public, it's, it, it's really not necessary, it's, it's a shame that we got to this point. But we would like to go over some things and, and, and just talk it out and see where we could get at.
Which is why we do a first reading, so we can get to hear from you.
Okay, but like I said, we, we don't necessarily want, I, I don't know if it's necessary for the residents to hear all the dirty laundry of the police department. I mean, there's enough, I mean, next weekend, it might be something else, I hope not.
You never want to overturn rocks, you never know what you're going to find. Then therefore, the public safety is meeting on one matter, uh, also, uh, may have another meeting, or at that same meeting, plan to meet with the PBA and, uh, this union also.
I'll be myself, Councilman Oliver, and Councilman Gitchen.
Okay? They will get back to you, do not leave before you give, uh, Mr. Gurchensky your contact information, okay?
So obviously, like, like Sergeant Nielsen stated, I mean, it, it's a shame at this point that we haven't had a deputy chief already. I think it is a slap in the face to three, two lieutenants. We do have a lieutenant that's been being paid, uh, suspended for the last, uh, seventeen months. So I mean, we, we have two great candidates right there. Like I said, why we're not going to them, I don't know. Was the deputy chief position ever brought up to you guys within the last, I don't know, two years? Was it on the, see, uh, Mr. Zane, was it on the budget for twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one? It wasn't? There was never any, any suggestions to you guys or any indication that you were gonna have a deputy chief?
Maybe nineteen, maybe, but I doubt it.
Maybe?
Maybe. Because I know, I know in nineteen, we spoke about getting rid of the deputy chief's position, but.
I mean, like I said, uh, I mean, and then the, the thought process of adding a fourth lieutenant, I think it just adds to more confusion in our department. We already, like I said, we have, we're supposed, there's an acting lieutenant, so we do have three lieutenants. It's kinda confusing, um, we don't even know who's in charge when the chief's out. Do, do you guys know? What happens, or if the chief retired tomorrow?
So if the chief, if you actually read the ordinance, if he actually.
I, I read the ordinance, I'm just asking you guys.
So, the ordinance shows that if he actually retired today, he would have to delegate that position to somebody else. And then from that point on, that mayor and council would actually have to now step in and pick from, let's say, three lieutenants, who's gonna be your next chief, opposed to a deputy chief.
I understand. Do we, do we know the ordinance that we're looking to delete today? Do we know how that's worded?
What do you mean?
Uh, the words were deleted? There shall, within the police department of the borough of South River, be one deputy chief of the police. The deputy chief of police shall properly maintain the efficiency of the police department in supervised personnel assigned to the chief of police. Shall promote the force by by the rules, regulations of the police department of South River. We, we understand how, how strong the word shall is.
Yeah.
As I said, I mean, our rules and regulations say that we all shall be, um, well-able. This November, we've been sporting, sporting beards, uh, I kinda wanna make, maybe we could add it on the next agenda to amend our rules and regulations that beards, beards, uh, year-round.
By the way, that makes a good point, why are you wearing the color?
Uh, we are supporting, um, the.
No sheep November.
The, the barriers, cancers, we are, um.
You're raising money.
We're raising money, if you go to the police department, uh, the police department Facebook, uh, there's a link of, uh, PBA Facebook, the police department Facebook, uh, anyone who's donated to our place.
You've been doing that for a few years now.
Yeah, two years. Bring me off the task, alright? I feel like I wanted to end it on that.
I was gonna mention it, uh, later, but I figured you might as well do the, uh, honors.
So I mean, I, I guess I'll leave, leave you guys with this, after knowing what's been going on for the past however long, after hearing, um, our president's speech, after hearing, you speak, after hearing, what's going on, do you guys think that the police department's running, uh, efficiently as is?
The rule is that you are not allowed to poll the council on such matters like that, I'm sorry, so.
I.
I'm sure you can tell the, uh, public safety, uh, what you think.
But I guess, I mean, I mean, just, and having four lieutenants kinda takes away from the unity of command. Being that we're too top-heavy, being that there's not a, uh, workload for a deputy chief, I don't see how it is there for the fourth lieutenant either. I think it would just be good for the direction of our department, um, like, like our president said, for us young guys to know, um, who our next leader is, for the chief to start training him, and just for there to be a better communication of the chain of command, uh, rather than, uh, several more cops and an extra lieutenant to be there, uh, staring up at an ultimate carrot, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the first call?
Janice Smith, Portis, forty-six, Tilted Pride. Last week, I received an email from Borough Attorney Andrew Wyatt, that no violation was found regarding my complaint of the rock salt deck, construction litter, and garbage that was partial, was stored partially on my property leaning against my fence. I filed an offer request for who and when the inspection took place, there was no record. I have a certified survey, which I showed the la, the last meeting, and my corner markers are the only ones on the property. So like you said, you don't get involved in property disputes, but it is my property, um, that it's on. It's a hazard to human, plants, and wildlife. It's an eyesore, I don't want garbage piled against a new fence, what I do apply to replace my fence. Um, that's why this might not be a legal definition of discrimination, but I believe I'm being victimized by selective reinforcement. I'm requesting for that recently, then inspection by the old bridge code, uh, enforcement officer. There seems to be a pattern of delaying and sweeping problems under the rug. For over a year, I've been told that all work was up to code and inspections as indicated in your correspondence. I have lost faith in the validity of the borough inspection, that's been a deal for request for every month to get it. Uh, do not show a signature for the wall inspection, twice said the wall permit is for two feet. Mr. Droppa's inspection signature is on the fence permit, but he never said he visited my property to inspect the fence. He repeated that he was the property inspector, not the building or zoning inspector. He either returned to his vehicle to get his tape measure, to report the height of the fence, and took pictures of the fence and my property space. When I questioned that point, Mr. Lundenski said he couldn't speak for him. Well, who is his supervisor? Before Mr. Droppa visited my house, he sent an email that a violation letter was sent, and as a reply to my email request, would specifically mention rock salt leaking. I requested all this information, but it was not part of any reports given to me. Another example of selective enforcement is with survey maps. Obviously, some people are allowed to submit surveys that are not certified to them, as evidenced by the map I received from the adjacent property to my complaint. Their survey map was certified to the original owner from nineteen sixty, who has not lived there for over twenty years, and did not dispute the fence, the survey, or the bonus died in the nineteen eighties. That original survey and defense actually is to my benefit because it does validate where the corner points are, and shows that the fence that I have been complaining against is not six inches from the property line. These inconsistencies show how permits and inspections are conducted. Repeatedly, I've been told that it's a matter of for Superior Court, but why isn't the borough suggesting mediation through the court with the homeowners before a permit is given? Especially when there's no evidence of a complaint about prior property encroaching, uh, from prior owners. If I submitted a certified survey that shows the fences on my property line, and I wanted to remove, are you gonna have to grant permission? Like I said, they, the residents that I have a complaint about said that they, that they can just rip everything down without telling me. Also, thanks to the conversation with Mr. Gindy, who asked me about the additional soil, which I have documented in texts and emails with Mr. Effinger and Mr. Lundenski, complaining about the regrading of property to even out and de, uh, and downgrade the cover of the base of the wall. It need a major soil addition because the property slumps down. I have been continually told, telling you, um, I, I have been continually, I, I'm sorry. I have been continually told that you could put a fence on top of a whole wall that would create more than a six-foot fence. Okay, you put a fence on top, on a part of a wall that does not even have soil behind it. Can you artificially support a wall with some dirt and stones? Every time it rains, the scent of the dirt evokes. According to the borough code, soil addition does require a permit. Mr. Lundenski's response said that the owner did not create a drainage problem on his side. Of course not, my side has been dropped to natural grade prior to their excavation, which has now created pooling of water and a hazard position with the large trees that surround my property. A retaining wall is not, and I was hoping Mr. Katri would say, supposed to retain, is supposed to retain the soil behind the wall. It is, it is, is this type of construction an engineering practice that's acceptable and safe? I'm sure the wall on their side is very nice, says the borough will think it's okay, but I see a board, railroads, stakes, mud, concrete, and landscape prop, uh, fabric on my side. Then I also see a black pipe as a corner post with an open concrete block. Amazingly, the code, uh, for South River about fences says they get to put the nice, the rock side out, but you don't even care about what the construction looks like on the other side of the fence. New Jersey Universal Code, which the South River code officials should be aware of, clearly states that no persons shall construct, in large, at alter, reconstruct, or dis, demolish a retaining wall or series of retaining walls, having a total height four feet or greater, or retaining wall less than four feet, having a negative impact on a foundation without persecuting a construction permit. As a lifelong resident, I usually feel victimized by the actions or inactions of the borough. You allow the resident to build a wall, what, that was not what they said on the permit. This is regardless of the size, even though DCA is supposed to be inspecting it. When I first complained to DCA, they were told that the wall was under forty-eight inches, and my complaints were minimized with the state. As I told Mr. Gindy, this is not politics, it's about equal code enforcement. And just so in case you crap, what it looks like. Okay, so this is what I see. Okay, so this is what I look at every day on my property. Okay, so, and I, I don't even understand how that could be engineeringly correct, to put a fence post exposed. Okay, and it, sorry, it's difficult to see, but this can give you an, an idea how much the drop is to the actual real property, where the level bracket is, and how much it was raised. Okay? So here you can see. And on this one. It's just difficult to see, but. And this one, where it's actually a ruler, and I, and I sent all, I sent them over the whole year. Okay, so these are, these are not new pictures, I was in correspondence with Mr. Effinger since the spring of twenty twenty. And, and emailed, most of you, what had emailed, score on the public there, as well as Mr. Lundenski. Okay, so here is the real property level on my property. Okay, and usually, I think according to case law in New Jersey, that a retaining wall is usually retains the property above, on the property above. Okay, my survey map says the two railroad type wall is mine. Okay, according to the tech, you know, you keep telling me that you don't get involved in property disputes, but by doing that, they came in and they just tore everything out. Okay, tore it out, tore part of my fence out as well. Okay, so, but here's the real property line, here's where I, back in nineteen eighty-six, when I went through zoning, okay, we put up a stocking fence, my property has two, two houses behind me. So now I have a fence with a seven-foot piece on the fan, and then if I add my fence, where, what's gonna look like? Okay, you have all these different heights. They artificially raised the wall. Okay, there's nothing behind it except a board with railroad sticks. And you can't tell me that's engineeringly correct. Okay? So then, okay, quitting with the garbage, and I know I was told today that, um, the rock salt wasn't the problem, perhaps you should look at, I, I, from Dynasol, which is what the company that they have, their specs on it, okay? Wear gloves, watch for water and seepage, and also, as this site was recommended by our county agricultural agent about, um, okay, how did, the impact of salt on plants, and how to reduce plant injury from winter salt applications. Okay, so, we're not even talking about just what on the cycle, this is going into the ground, and into our groundwater, mine particularly. Okay, which I've already lost plants. Okay, so, yeah, okay, uh, this was a picture I submitted before about what it looked like. Okay, that is not according to whoever inspected it, okay? Which I have no name, um, said that that's not a problem for me to look at, okay?
In your ten minutes is coming up, so.
And again. Excuse me?
Your ten minutes is coming up, so.
Well, so other people went longer than ten minutes.
Uh, I didn't.
Okay, well, I'm at the end. Okay, so here, this one's not very good, but here is my, okay, remember, and I'm the only one with property stakes. Okay, so here's my property stake. And here, this is the wall that all that junk is on, it's partially on my property, and all of it is leaning against my fence. Okay, so I'm asking for an independent inspection and some assistance in this. I want to finish my landscape and my art, and for the past year, I have not been able to do that.
I think the DCA is supposed to come in on this.
That's what we have been told.
Yes, and I did get an email from him today.
Okay, so, when they report.
But it's not, but this is code inspection here in South River, this is not, the DCA does, is not going to be looking at garbage on a wall, okay? The DCA is looking at the height of the wall, and they will get involved if it's forty-eight inches. Right? But you're, you're, you never follow, the codes were never followed for inspection. And there was no inspection name on the permit board.
Thank you for your time, we'll see you again in a few weeks. Anyone else on first call, second call?
Could be Richard Byrne, eleven to set place. I'm speaking about the, uh, the snow street, which was not moved on first reading. I'll just speak to the fact that I'm, uh, a lot of people will be in my situation, where I have a four-bedroom house, I have three grown children, all the cars and jobs, so we have five cars, but my driveway only has been due to conduct three at any time. So I have two cars that, you know, by necessity, I have to leave out in the street. Now, I'm a pretty good citizen in, in the last big storm, I mean, I was out there, I shoveled curb to curb, all hundred and nine feet in front of my house and across the street. So there's eight feet that had been cleared on the set place up to my house, where it's curb to curb, and then another eight feet beyond, so, um, what do we do with the, the extra two cars? And I, I, let's politely call them grumpy neighbors who would be not inclined to let me use empty space in their driveways. So, I, my thought, and it's an idea you can take under advisement, is some sort of alternate side of the street parking plan for whether it's a, a, a given time period, like for instance, twelve noon to twelve midnight during the snow emergency, no parking on the north side of east west streets and the east side of north south streets, and then twelve midnight, people have, you know, you can go curb to curb, or curb on the one side, and then people have to go out at midnight, move their cars to the other side, and, or whether it's a, while the snow is falling, no parking on this side of the street, and when the snow has stopped falling, everybody has to move their cars over, and then public works takes care of the other side. And that's a solution that's not a hundred percent, uh, but, you know, the, the houses with no parking, off-street parking, and people like me with more cars than we can fit in our one pound. So, I mean, it's, it's just an idea that I'm throwing up as a, a possible solution to this if we have, you know, and, and I, you know, you have six inches of snow, and the borough can clear that six inches of snow within twenty-four hours. Beyond that, every inch beyond that, that's another twenty-four hours for every three inches beyond that, so, you know, that's the equipment we have. And you can't send the big trucks down the forty and thirty-foot streets, you can only send the pickup truck with the plow, and then you have what we had is. And then you have what we had is, you know, high snow and it's hard compacted. And I was out there with my garden spade chopping it up and moving it. Very good exercise, I did that instead of my daily walks while the snow was on. But, yeah, um, some sort of alternative that takes into account people that don't have any other options, so. Thank you, sir.
Very good idea. There are ideas out there, that's why we present them. Anyone else? Is there anything, nobody left? First call, second call, third call?
Motion opposed, actually.
Motion by Mr. Gindi, seconded by Mr. Seola, all in favor.
I am against. So is public portion. There are no mayoral appointments, we can go to the consent resolutions. I have a clerk who are having also along to it, one other one?
It will be three of six, yes.
Okay. Parking meters, yeah, three of six.
Yes. Resolutions, two ninety-one, accept October twenty-fifth, regular and executive session council minutes. Uh, two ninety-two, certify the twenty-twenty audit. Two ninety-three, authorize twenty-twenty-two public health services interlocal agreement. Two ninety-four, authorize amendment of property tax refund. Two ninety-five, approve insertion of special item of revenue. Two ninety-six, authorize purchase and install of playground equipment at Fitzpatrick Park. Two ninety-seven, authorize purchase and install of playground equipment at Shinevine Park. Two ninety-eight, authorize cancellation of federal and state grant receivables and appropriation reserve balances. Two ninety-nine, authorize construction department permit refund. Three hundred, approve and accept Middlesex County OEM and preparedness mitigation plan. Three oh one, authorize November fifteenth utility refunds. Three oh two, authorize the bills and claims. This, three oh three, appoint winter recreation department employees. Three oh four, authorize vehicle auction. Three oh five, appoint part-time bus driver. Three oh six, temporary suspension of parking meters for the holidays. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gindi, seconded by Mr. Mrs. Ballas. For call?
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Gindi?
Yes, with abstention to three oh two.
Thank you. Councilman Gertchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
And Council President Seola?
Yes, we just sent you the three oh two.
Thank you.
Revolutions have been adopted. There is no new business, so we come to governing body comments. I begin with Mrs. Seola, so I'll begin with Mrs. Mira.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to, um, ask, uh, whose idea was this meeting to put all of the new first readings under agenda session?
Uh, that was, uh, my idea.
Well, thank you. I believe it's the only time you've ever done that. And I think it's a good way to actually learn about these ordinances before we put them in first reading. I say this because we keep spending money every time we publish this in first reading and then have to revisit again and redo first reading. Am I correct, um?
About republishing? Yes, when you, you have to republish when you put it on for first reading.
Costs a fee every time we do that, correct?
I'm not sure what the fee is, that would be something for soup.
Like the cheerleading, we just, yeah, we went through republish that because it's first reading.
Okay, yes.
You know, the ordinance and average ordinance is about forty bucks average. Okay.
Okay, still money that we're wasting. Uh, thank you for doing the agenda this way. It gives us a chance to discuss the things you put in first reading. Um, I did have a question, since we had a bunch of concerns of, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four. When is the last time we had a, the Public Safety Committee met? When was the last meeting?
Friday? Wasn't Friday yet.
What month? October?
Yeah, but it had to do with litigation.
Okay. Um, and I'm, I'm wondering why this didn't come from Public Safety rather than Mr. Gindi. You guys are in charge of Public Safety.
Let me answer that.
Okay.
Starting from last meeting, I'm going to be going through all these ordinances. You're going to see a bunch of ordinances for the years, for the meetings to come, I'm going to start cleaning them up. This was an ordinance that's been a thorn in my side.
Okay, I'm, I'm only asking because you are not on Public Safety.
I agree.
You brought up, I think, Public Safety should be discussing these things and bringing it up to us. I haven't heard anything from this board. Uh, there's been plenty of boards that haven't met. Uh, I know, Mr. Mayor, you put me on the, uh, mayor's advisory board of persons with disability that did not meet once this year. I, I get we're getting out of the COVID phase and I hope that next year everyone seems to get back into the rhythm of meeting again. But I feel, as you heard from the public today, there's a lack of communication everywhere. And I think that does fall upon us as council members. So, that is just my input on that. Besides that, I want to say thank you for the purchases of the playgrounds that we will be using next year. Again, I feel like if we communicated a little better with the things that we are trying to accomplish as a board, or maybe it's just me, because, you know, I'm here on this side and you're on that side, but uh, if we communicated a little better, maybe we would understand why we, how we're trying to achieve making South River better. I'm glad that we did the agenda this way today because, just like the snow emergency, yes, it's a great idea for DPW to be able to clean all our streets, but that affects a lot of our residents who don't have help, so. Uh, I hope in the future, I know we only have two more meetings left, that we continue to do our agenda this way because it's a functioning way, so thank you. Uh, Board of, our Food Bank will be doing their Thanksgiving of, like last year, so it won't be a sit-down meal, but it's kind of, I think, a pick-up drive-by to get your meals. I want to wish everyone a good, a happy Thanksgiving. Um, and I hope we stay safe and remember what we're thankful for. We see with our food bank every year that more and more people are in need uh, and don't have what, you know, some of us do, so, please help support the food bank any way you can, and if you're interested in volunteering, they're always looking for more help. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Gertchinsky.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first off, I'd like to thank all of our, uh, first responders, our police, fire department, and Robert Wood Johnson for the job that they do for us. And, uh, Thanksgiving Day, our DPW director had announced too, that there won't be any collection on Thanksgiving Day. Uh, the people that normally have garbage collection on that day will be picked up. We'll set that out on Tuesday evening for Wednesday pickup. Um, Thursday, the offices will be closed, there's no recycling, it will be picked up. Recycling will be picked up on Saturday, November twenty-seventh. Uh, Friday, the office is closed, no collection, no bulk recycling. And the recycling center will be open on Saturday if you want to deposit anything. Monday yard waste, Tuesday is normal pickup day. All right, um, let's see. Oh, we've also put in more stop signs in the town, so, uh, it was on the agenda and everything last night. It was approved, so hopefully it'll slow down a few people on some of the intersections and raceways in town. And, uh, watch out for the children a bit more. With that, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Uh, I'm sure the mayor will have something to say about the congregation of churches, which is a, an event that usually takes place. It didn't take place last year, but hopefully it will take place this year. And with that, I thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Olivera?
Uh, to start off, I just would like to, if anyone's interested in coaching rec basketball, we are in need of coaches. I've currently signed up to coach a team and I know nothing about basketball, so. Um, so if you can, please volunteer. Right now, I know Councilman Gindi will, uh, probably go into more detail, but the rec department has seen a record number of participants this winter. We have three basketball teams from three, third to fifth grade. One, so that's a, a huge turnout. Uh, wrestling's full, cheerleading, softball clinic has almost twenty. So, again, if you're interested in volunteering, please come out, uh, speak to Lakeisha, because she could definitely use some volunteers. Uh, just a reminder, as the weather gets colder, make sure water pipes, uh, don't freeze. You know, it's supposed to be twenty degrees, uh, at night in the coming days, so please be mindful of that. Uh, as Councilwoman Mira mentioned, you know, in the last, what, two years, I think we've redone three parks in town. So I look forward to continuing the momentum of redoing parks, uh, with the current council and, and really try to improve, continue to improve and make the town a better place for our, our kids. Um, and with that, Mayor, I just want to wish the council, the staff, and all the residents a happy Thanksgiving. Um, and God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Gindi.
Thank you. Um, since the last meeting, we have had the trunk or treat winners. First place went to Maria Santos, second place to John Pelaski, and third place to Kathleen Hawk. Uh, Halloween contest winners, uh, went to first place Maria Wallfinger, second place Rich Sish, and third place Dan Popowski. They did a phenomenal job, uh, matter of fact, I think the positions were switched over. Uh, but, uh, they did a phenomenal job, especially with the way they decorated the houses. Uh, some of them were a little intimidating to walk by, needless to say. But, yeah, congratulations. Um, one of the ordinances that I was looking at, which I'm probably going to entertain in the future, was the possibility of us maybe getting together, putting a committee together for like building committee. Something that we should, uh, consider. I wouldn't mind being something on this where we can look at all of our borough buildings and start assisting, starting off the police department, so that's just an idea. Um, other than that, happy, uh, Thanksgiving to all, stay hea- stay healthy. There we go. Thank you.
Mrs. Ballas?
Okay, they mentioned the garbage, uh, schedule. So, remember, Tuesday night through Wednesday for Thursday people. Because I did notice the Fri- uh, Veterans Day, everybody has a garbage. So, just a reminder. Other than that, I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and a happy Hanukkah to all of those who celebrate that. Be safe, be careful. That's it.
Thank you. That's the President Seola.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just one thing, the EDC will be meeting on Wednesday, seven P M. Um, we've been having some good turnout, very good dialogues and conversations, so we'll move it that way. And just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. As you saw in the pictures, the police officers are rather sribly looking. Uh, as the officer said, it's no shave November, they are raising money for cancer. Uh, and go to the Facebook page, you can make donations through there, it's for the month of November, as they call it. So, um, that is something worthwhile that our police department is doing and tries to support them. Uh, little matters of this and that, uh, something for our governing body. Uh, coming up to January first. Want you to consider about January first. This year, it's going to be our traditional January first swearing-in, everybody's sworn in with the, uh, the, uh, fire department and such, and then we'll have all the appointments. Not all towns do that. Consider whether or not you want to consider doing that. As some towns, like for example, Serval, they simply meet, they swear in the governing body or the mayor, and then they have their main appointments at their first meeting in January. Consider it. Um, just different ideas, just something out there. Also, whether or not you want to continue wearing the maroon shirts. Do you want to go back to dressing up? Do you want to dress down? Uh, do you not want to have any dress code? Old Bridge does not have a dress code. Uh, that's again, something to consider for the new year. I'd like to, even though it's not official, to congratulate the winners for the election. Mr. Olivera, Mr. Gindi, uh, most likely the results are not going to change. Welcome them back to the governing body. And also to thank Mrs. Kenny and Mr. Pezzuto, running against them. Uh, it is not an easy thing, uh, to take part in a campaign. But as Hubert Humphrey once said, if you don't like what's going on, get in there with your own brand of soap and clean it up. So, congratulations to everybody for a well-fought campaign. Most of the governing body and the professionals will be going down to the League of Municipalities Convention, which is in Atlantic City. It was set up day today and tomorrow, various, uh, seminars. Convention Hall opens up, uh, we'll go down there and see what we can learn about what else is going on in our state. As you were told, on the twenty-fourth is South River's best-kept secret. It is the Ecumenical Service, uh, at Holy Trinity Church on Leonardine at seven P M. The service lasts about forty-five minutes. Afterwards, there's coffee and donuts. It is a wonderful thing to attend if you've never attended it, for no other reason, you can see what Holy Trinity Church looks like inside. Um, every year, it's usually done in a different church. You have a chance to visit a different church in town and see what is happening there. I urge you to attend. I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and a happy Hanukkah, which is rapidly approaching. We will reconvene on December sixth and on the final, uh, Monday of the month. Let's see, the twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, I believe, the twenty-seventh of, uh, December is our final meeting. So, that'll be also coming up. I have nothing else, is there anything else to come before us? Hearing none, I call for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mrs. Ballas, seconded by Mr. Gindi, all in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned, thank you.